Roll call, please.
Alderman Moros, here.
Alderman Collins, here.
Alderman Barella, here.
Alderman Hoffman, here.
Alderman Rucker, here.
Mayor Harmanson, here.
Alderman Osteen, here.
That's good work. All right, we're gonna start with citizens communications. It's a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and the board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Any questions or comments for the mayor and the board may also be sent to the city clerk at T B E R R E T H at O S A G beach dot org, no later than 10 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizens communications section of the agenda. The board of Alderman will not take any action on items not listed on the agenda, nor will respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and the board of Alderman welcome and value input and feedback from the public. And I know we have a couple of people that want to speak tonight, so if you don't mind, come on up. If you've not already signed in, sign in, and you'll have three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Jim Berger.
Sir, if you don't mind, just right up on the microphone for the folks at home.
Sorry?
Nope, no worries, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Berger. I'm the president of the Alono Point Horse Association. In for you guys on March 20th this year, in conjunction with Drew Bowman, who had put a gen item on the docket to talk about the requirements for adoption of existing roadways. Unfortunately, he, after that meeting, Mr. Bowman ceased communications with us, so it might sense to me it was unsuccessful. So we have made a lot of progress on what I felt was sort of the consensus of the board at one time, which was for existing roadways, the process being to identify the issues that would make it not comply with the city guidelines, so statements were made to the effect that if you want to never adopt an existing roadway, then make the city guidelines standard, because, you know, you basically won't find roadways that need those. So what we were hoping for was to get the outstanding issues identified, so that we can take those issues and develop a design and address them, you know, in conjunction with the city. And, you know, work, been working with, we are on the special road district.
List of roads that they're considering, that they, you know, made an offer to. But we don't want to just do the bare minimum that we could do, which is just, you know, spread a layer of asphalt on there and take the 90% funds that they're offering. We'd like to make the road acceptable to the city, so that we can, you know, essentially be first-class citizens. And, you know, what we heard in that meeting was that the city was interested in adopting roadways, and that they were willing to make, you know, exceptions and work with the homeowners to, you know, attempt to get it done. It's not done until, you know, the end, obviously, when everything's signed off on. But this bill that's on your agenda today, the number 25102, I guess I'm requesting that that be tabled, because I don't believe that that petition is ready to be, you know, accepted or denied. We haven't, we don't have a design that addresses any communications from the city that would be, you know, discrepancy with the guidelines, which is what I saw in the notes from the prior meeting, where I believe it was recommended that you guys reject the petition, because the roadway after improvements would not meet the city guidelines. But it's sort of, that sounds very circular to us. We know it won't meet the guidelines, and I believe the board said as much. So that's all we're asking for, is a delay, and the feedback that we asked for, thought we would get back in March. We don't have really paving time in front of us right now, but we do have design time to address these things, so that whenever paving time does arrive, beginning of next spring, that we'd be ready for the roadway district to kick in and get things done. So that's, hopefully, I'm under the three minutes. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. You're correct, it is item G tonight, and it's a first reading, so I know the board's heard you loud and clear, so if you want to stick around, that'd be great.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Don't come up, please.
Hello, my name is Matt Marskey, I'm a consulting engineer. I own two lots down in Alona. In your packet, I've come up with that design that I think fits those needs, fits the city needs, and deals with fire trucks. We're happy to go to the roadway district. We were kind of pushed this way, which is kind of a waste of time, but I just want to make sure that we're here, you know we're here, we've studied this, we can make this work, we need our road improved, and here to answer any questions is the new four.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Bill, will you want to speak too?
Sure. Hello, board. My name's Bill Berger, I live down at 5899 Quail Drive, Osage Beach, have talked with Phyllis before several times. What I'm here to address is the problems that I'm having with the Airbnb that is right next door to me, and another one in the same cove. We live in a family-oriented cove, where the grandkids are over here. My son-in-law's a fiberglass business down here, so the grandkids are always at our house. The problems that we have is mostly depending on not the families that come down here, because they enjoy the lake as much as the residents here enjoy the lake. It's the ones that get the bachelorette parties and the bachelor parties, and the houses, one of the houses is only 900 square feet large, and it had 13 people in it. The other one is 2,000 square feet, and it had 12 people in it. Well, according to the fire department, it's supposed to be one person for every 200 square feet, is the occupancy. Well, nobody wants to take the bull by the horn and tell these people, hey, you got too many people here, you can't have these many people. It puts a large load onto the, onto the septic pump that we have in the back of the cove that takes care of all the houses. It has to be pumped out, and then the yellow light goes on. That's not my main concern. My main concern is just the vulgarity and the lack of respect from these parties that these two houses have been having. I called the police department on one of them, they responded. The next two days, they didn't. But with my grandkids there, they're five, two, one, nine, I just don't want to have to put up with their foul language and their boats bumping with the foul language music coming into the cove. It's not the families, but we need to have some type of ordinance or something to keep these people, because this guy, he's down in Arkansas, and he owns both of these houses, and he doesn't care what these houses look like, they're starting to deteriorate. But it's kind of like St. Louis City, they were having the same problem, and they addressed the problem that they had back in 2024, because they were selling drugs out of the Airbnbs, and the door would open 50 times a night, and then they finally, they finally put a pretty good stop to it. If, if you have, in 24 months, if you get called to the same residents in St. Louis City, that, they take their permit away. So what I'm suggesting is maybe we can make some money as a city, get a permit for these people that are running these as a business, because they never come down here, and then somehow limit the number of people that can stay in these residences. So that's my concern, and that's what I came up here to talk to you guys about. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak? All right, hope you all stick around. We have a, not a full agenda, but it's gonna be towards the end for both these items. But we're gonna move on now to the approval of the consent agenda. Has the board had a chance to review the minutes from the board of Alderman meeting October 30, 2005, 25, November 5, 2025, and November 6, 2025? Comments, questions, or concerns on that? Has the board also had a chance to review the bills list from November 20, 2025? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Alderman Moros, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Barella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I'm sorry?
We're Collins.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all good.
I was not looking, and I, even to the second, I could tell, I heard Phyllis Moros. My apologies. All right, moving on to the financial update, city administrator Devon Lake.
Good evening, I have better news than I had last month. Sales tax, we're 2%, point 2% over where we were this time last year, but we're still 0.4% under budget, so we're better. We might actually finish out pretty good for the year. And we had another record sales tax month for November, that's two in a row. So November's income reflects September sales, so. And then overall revenues were under budget, a little over 7%, but we're under budget on expenditures by 27%, so. Any questions?
Do you suppose a lot of that had to do with Bike Fest?
It might, yes.
I know it was bigger, in my opinion, than it's ever been, so they were spending money. All right, any questions for Devon? All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to unfinished business, we have bill 25-97, ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, establishing and providing for the election procedures to be followed for the general municipal election to be held April 7, 2026, in the city of Osage Beach. This is the second reading. City clerk, Tara Bear.
I have nothing further to add, unless somebody has any questions.
Seeing no comments or questions, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Rucker, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Moros?
Yes.
Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Barella?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. Moving on to new business, we have a resolution 2025-29, a resolution of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend the transfer in budget expenditures for the fiscal year 2025 to cover change order number two for Osage Beach Road Improvement Projects. Public Works Director Jeff Fisher, please. We've got to get that fixed.
Anybody got budget money?
Am I highlighting the situation now?
Yeah, that's, this is the one that needs to be rejected.
Okay. As stated in the memo you all received, this project, as we all know, was difficult, underperforming project, for sure.
These are the two items that have been...
That were on a previous agenda, that are no longer correct anymore. So we're just...
So we just need to, we need to make a motion, and then let it fail. The resolution, and then both of those two agenda, they're both the budget, and then your request, 95, all need to be failed.
Correct.
Right.
And then the next, the third item will be the correct change order, where he will speak to that.
Okay.
You want to clean this up a little bit?
So we'd like the, the staff recommends rejecting resolution 25-29, and the best way to do that for the minutes is if somebody would make a motion and let it die for lack of a second. Because everything has to be a positive motion, somebody has to make a motion to approve. If it's not seconded, it dies for lack of a second.
Motion to approve resolution 25-29.
Is there a second?
Second. No, I don't want to do that.
Nope.
No. I'm sorry.
All right, seeing no second, resolution 2025-29 dies on the dice. Next, we have bill 25-96, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 24.93, adopting the 2025 annual budget transfer of funds for necessary expenditures to cover change order number two for Osage Beach Road Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $100,555.69. First reading, again, Jeff Fisher.
We're ready now?
Nope, same thing.
Same thing.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
No.
No.
Seeing no second, bill 25-96 also dies.
Guess what, Jeff?
Next, we have bill 25-95, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to assign change order number two for the Osage Beach Road Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $103,569.45. Jeff Fisher, please.
We are ready now.
Yes.
All right, as I was saying, as we all know, this project was not performing, meeting expectations, there were a lot of reasons for that, I highlighted some of that in the memo. Our construction inspector JD Delaney did a phenomenal job navigating this thing. We jumped in June of this year on that project, after the city engineer had resigned, and got the best outcome we could out of it. And towards the end, part of our job was to assign responsibility for why it did not perform and meet expectations. We came to a number that we thought was reasonable, and then had a couple of discussions with the consultant and contractor, and, and that's where that number came down, in the second of the two attachments to the memo. I think it's 21,000 and some change, forgive me, I don't remember exactly. And the city administrator and I and JD both all met with the consultant more recently, and disagree on what that number should be, and they've, they've made an offer, and I'll let Devon speak to that.
I did speak to Chris Boone, who's the president of Cochrane, we had a meeting with him yesterday, I spoke to him again today. His request is that the amount is lowered from the 21,000 and some change, down to 14,000. I told him I would present that to the board. Again, staff's recommendation is to not do that. And the documentation that Jeff emailed to the board, that amount has significantly been reduced, from 68,000 down to 21. And I explained to Mr. Boone that I didn't feel like it was the taxpayers' responsibility to pay for that additional amount, but that I would present that to you, and I would do whatever the board's pleasure is.
Alderman Rucker.
There has been some... Okay. There has been some indication that's, some wording that says the design change that took place in this, the project should have been rebid. I am confused on that. I, what I think that's saying is, when the board decided that they wanted the sidewalk down the other side of the road, that when that decision was made, is that the design change you're speaking of?
That, and I believe the road was widened, which changed the design a lot.
The sidewalk was widened, from four to six feet, I think, wasn't it?
I didn't remember the sidewalk.
Whatever, it was significant enough, because it changed storm boxes and that kind of thing, it should have been rebid.
Well, because the confusing thing I have there is the fact that, as far as I'm concerned, the responsibility back on our, our designing people, Cochrane Engineering, they were the ones, after the board had requested to, for that change, and, and I remember the meeting, we discussed it, to be very honest, I was against the change, but it didn't matter, the board decided to do it. And we were, we were told by the representative that there was no problem with moving forward with it, that we had all the quantities bid, and there would be no problem with moving forward with the bid and the project at that point. So the whole point I want to bring up here is that, that that was slightly talked about, and basically, we were reassured that there would be no difficulty in the project because of that.
Yeah, I think the project had been bid and awarded.
Right.
Changes were made. I told the consultant, they should have been, let you know that the project should have been rebid, sounds like they didn't. There's some disagreement on that, too, apparently, so, but yeah, it should, it should have been rebid.
Well, there was discussion about, about not necessarily rebidding it, about, but about how difficult it would be for us to come up with the amount, because we were concerned about what the amount was going to be.
Okay.
And, and I remember the discussion, because it was, we've already got it bidded out, we've already got it awarded, we've already got the quantities that we know there are, so they, they advised us there would be no difficulty. So I just wanted to share that.
Good.
Alderman Hoffman.
I'm just backing up Alderman Rucker, I remember that conversation as well, because I was very much on the fence, and that was kind of what swayed me, was that they, basically, what Alderman Rucker said is how I recall it, too.
Any other comments?
With that, I would make a motion that we accept bill 2595, which, if I understand correctly, city administrator means that we are looking at a $21,000 settlement, and some change. Correct.
Correct, that, but that is not the change order itself, so the change order itself is, but yes, 21,000.
That's part of it, the whole...
Correct.
Yes.
Would we not reach out back to Cochrane, then, on, on the issue of it being...
I mean, we can, we had a very lengthy conversation yesterday, and I had a very lengthy conversation with him today.
So where this leaves us is, we're not authorized, you're not authorizing the city administrator to pay enough to meet their offer. And so if they, if Cochrane says they're upset with that, then it, they have to come back to the board, or we're at a standoff.
All right, we have a motion as the bill as reads. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, any further discussion? It's a little confusing, so. Well, the, the bill 2595 is authorized in deduction of 21,000, they only wanted 14,000, so they're not getting the request based on the approval of this, so. Okay.
But they can come back and ask the board for the difference.
Correct. Any further discussion? All right, we have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, bill 25-95 passes. Next, we have bill 25-98, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement for the airport improvement project. We are asking for a first and a second reading, city administrator Devon Lake.
So I was contacted by CMT, who is our design engineer for the runway project, and they informed me that there was a portion of the grant that had not been executed, and that in order to receive reimbursement, that we needed to go ahead and execute this second grant. Ty, do you have any additional information you'd like to share on that?
Oh, yeah, this is, basically just fell through the cracks during the transition from our city engineer. They were sending pay requests out and weren't getting any responses. Anyway, this, because of this project's been going on so long, this was just a piece that fell through the cracks, that didn't get approved in order for us to get reimbursement from, for the runway project.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, bill 25-98 also passes. Oh, I'm so sorry. Second reading, same bill, bill 25-98, ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement for the airport improvement project, second reading. If there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Moros, roll call, please.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Barella? Yes. Alderman Collins?
Yes.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yes.
Alderman Moros?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Now, what happened there?
Threw a little...
I tricked him and didn't call him next, but he thought he'd reached sneaky slides.
It's because I was right about something in our office a couple of...
All right.
Two Broncos fans fighting.
Next, we have bill 25-100, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with the Osage Beach Fire Protection District for 911 dispatch calls out service, first reading, Chief Davis, please.
Mayor members of the board, this is a request to approve the communication agreement with the fire district. We have dispatched for the fire district for several years. This is just a, their agreement is usually a three- to four-year contract, so it's time to renew. The new annual base fee for dispatching service is $30,226.60 annually, and $10 per call per month, so, police department recommends approval.
Alderman Rucker.
Just one comment, the chief said several years, but I think you're more closely to you since 1987, 88?
Yeah, it was before my time here.
A little bit more than several years.
All right, seeing no further questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Who said that? Alderman, Alderman Moros, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, bill 25-100, first reading passes. Next, we have bill 25-101, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending chapter 125, Human Resource Systems Personnel Rules and Regulations, section 125.120, attendance and leave of the city code as set forth, first reading. You taking this, Devon?
April.
Okay. April White, please, Assistant City Mayor.
Yes, mayor, members of the board, this is just an ordinance cleanup, so two or three years ago, when the board added Christmas Eve holiday. On a year like this, when Christmas Day falls on Thursday, then it results in three holidays, so employees need to be able to carry over 36 hours of holiday rather than 24. So it's really just an ordinance cleanup, I recommend approval.
Comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Alderman Collins.
How did three days get to 36 hours instead of 24? Isn't that an eight-hour day?
Well, because the eligible employees for the holiday leave are police, and they're, they work 12-hour shifts and dispatch.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Barella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, bill 25-101 passes. Next, we have bill 25-102, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, accepting Alono Point Road as a city street as described in exhibit eight. Public Works Director Jeff Fisher, please.
I apologize. All right, Alono Point, as was mentioned earlier, seems to be good interest. Last time we talked about this, I did, we didn't have a fully complete petition. Mr. Berger sent all of those documents to me, I wish I'd have known he had all of them before, but the city never did, could find them, and the district didn't have them, but we have them now, and as they were saying, suggesting tabling it, I think that's probably the way to go. Alderman Hoffman and I were talking before the meeting, and maybe we can get a few people out there and talk about ideas. I suggested to Mr. Marskey that maybe the way to go in this case is, if they can pull it off, that they, the neighborhood, design this to get as close to city standards as possible, and we can measure that along the way together, and if we think we can get close enough, and they can work with the district and get the road done close to city standards, you would have to obviously weigh in on if that's good enough for you, but maybe we can get there together if they design it. And the reason why I'm suggesting that is because, as we talked about last time, this, this is so far away from city standards, and it's so constrained, I would not recommend the city design improvements to the road, because then the city owns every detail of that design. I would rather the neighborhood come together and, and design this with a, with an engineer that knows the city standards, and can work with staff, and, and see if we can figure this thing out. It's, it's what I would suggest with the direction we go, but if you'll give us some time to work together and see if we can agree to try that path.
So you, you agree tabling it this time, correct?
I agree.
All right, Alderman Rucker.
I just want to weigh in on that, and, and I know, Jeff, you haven't been through this process like this, but that... process like this, but that, this is what we have been used to doing when we get roads that are way, way off the, the guideline area.
Okay.
You know, and then, and then you, just to kind of, while we're on it, at some point, you would come back to the board and say, this is the guidelines, this is how close we can get. And then the board would generally give a consensus of approval that if they do that, if they bring it into close to the guidelines, then we would accept it when that is completed.
Okay.
That's kind of how that process works, so that, so that you're not getting close and then bringing it at a final, you know, bringing the final thing when it's all done, and the board's like, no, 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 that's not close enough, so.
Okay. That makes sense. I just, I'm also suggesting they design the improvements. They hire the engineer, they design it, working in collaboration with city staff.
Well, and as, as you will find, and I know you're getting around more and more to our roads, but we've got a lot of roads that are like Alono Point that
Okay.
may not be able to, I live on one. I live on one myself, that if it was brought to the board, I'd vote against it.
Yeah.
And I live on it, because it's, it's, it can't be brought up, it's, if, if it gets even close to the city guidelines, it's going to be on my front porch.
Yeah, right.
So that's, that's how bad my road is, so my road will never be brought into the city standards or city inventory.
Okay.
Well, Ash was different. Ash was closer. Ash was a lot closer.
Yeah, what do you want? It wasn't that close.
That's the reason I didn't, that's the reason I didn't bring in Maestri when we did Ash. I support that.
Yeah, I'm happy to work with them, see if we can figure that out.
Alderman Hoffman.
So just a comment and a question. I did sit with, with the Special Road District last night, there was some initial interest in, in that being a road that they might want to get involved with. Jeff and I did talk about it a little bit last night. Mr. Marske did call me today, so knew they were coming down here. So I, I would agree with tabling it. We're hoping, basically, what Alderman Rucker has kind of outlined a plan, which is kind of what we were already talking about, hoping to get Mr. Marske, myself, Jeff, Carrie, and Fred from Special Road District maybe go down and have a little powwow, see what we can do, bring something back to the board that makes sense. So, that being said, Cole, is it better to table this, or is it, is it better to let it die?
Table is better as long as we expect it to come back. The, well, what's, what is it on as?
We have a petition, so it definitely has to come back.
Yeah. I, I think, yeah, because it's a petition, but the, the, the trouble in tabling is if we table it and it never does come back, then we have, it, it stays on the table indefinitely, and that makes Tara's minutes a mess, so.
I think it depends on how long it's going to take you to do it. If it's going to take you months and months and months to get it done, I would recommend let this die and then bring it back when you're ready.
Re, just resubmit the same petition.
Yeah, just do it over.
And there's also a very good chance that it'll come back with a new legal description for right-of-way if we have to move any right-of-way stuff. So a new petition is probably going to be the best and most efficient way to do this. So I would let this one die, and we'll get more involved and, and get a clearer petition back with a good legal description and a good plan, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, with, with that in mind, if it's, if the petition's going to change a bunch anyways, then it would be to better, would be to let it die, no offense, and let, let it come back, get, get the petition right, and then let's vote on the, the good petition.
That's why I brought it up. So basically, the thought process is, we're kind of tabling it, but it's, it's not going to be clean enough to, to bring it back that way. That's what I was expecting. So, yeah, that's why I didn't want to table it, was I figured it was going to have to get cleaner. So, all right.
It's the same thing for you folks, it doesn't make it, it doesn't affect you either way, it's not, but it's, for, for our records, it makes it cleaner.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I've got a comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Just to clarify for the public, if we table this motion, we basically are stating that we are putting the design of the roadway to meet our guidelines back on the homeowners. Mr. Marske has provided engineering services for the city for several years, so we're not just basically putting this back on the homeowners, per se. We're putting it back into a engineering firm that has done work for the city, so he's well aware of the guidelines, to basically try to make this meet our ordinances, our guidelines, to accept this into the city inventory. Just wanted to clarify that. That we're not just saying, hey, homeowners, have at it. We've got a licensed engineer who works for the city as a contractor, so we're in good hands.
There you go. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, seeing no second, the bill dies.
Okay, we're not doing that.
We've had a lot of those tonight.
All right, next, we're going to move on to a motion to approve the new city of Osage Beach mission statement. I'm going to turn this over to Eric Condelto, Marketing Development Director.
Hey, good evening, everybody. How's everybody tonight?
Good, dude.
Good. Hey, um, next few minutes, I want to talk a little bit about the city's mission statement and the marketing and the communications platform that Holly and I have been building. In the course of the conversation with the direction we're doing for 26, marketing and communications, we were talking with Devon and April about the current mission statement, and is there a way that maybe we could refine it, make it a little bit tighter? I was kind of excited about that, because my background is in brand marketing, and I've helped companies and organizations and brands really define who they are and how they communicate. And that's really what I'm trying to get across tonight. When, I've given you guys all the information where we're talking about the process, so I've talked to all you guys, I've read all the citizen surveys, and I've talked to some business owners to really try to understand what Osage is, what it's all about, and how we, as a community, operate. And with that, I started to build out the marketing plan. So the first step was the mission statement itself. The current mission statement, I think it, it's just a little bit too long. I think it tries to get everything done in a lot of sentences. And so I put together what I thought was a good mission statement, a couple of examples, and we sent this to all the employees. And out of the 100-plus employees, we got a few responses back, and we were able to refine it. And then I sent it to the management team, got some more responses back, we refined it. And then what I've sent to you guys all a couple of weeks ago for your consideration is the final recommendation that we're making. You know, the reality is, is we're going to do our mission statement, and then we're going to have our vision, then we're going to have our purpose. And when I look at our current mission statement, it's not saying things weren't done against it, but for me, it wasn't clear on how every department, how every person in this room is bringing this mission statement to life. And so what I tried to do is to refine it a little bit more. And what I'm recommending as a motion is, is bringing together a tighter message around being the heart of Lake of the Ozarks. So the motion here is to talk about the mission statement as, "Osage Beach is the heart of Lake of the Ozarks. Our mission is to strengthen our community and our position as a lake's leading destination by supporting local business, attracting new opportunities, and enhancing the quality of life for all those who live, work, and visit." So it's something that's easy, it's something that we can all recite, and I think that if something is easy to understand, it'll be actioned against. And with that being said, this will be the foundation of all the marketing, all the communication that we take moving forward from here on out. And I know I sent all the information to you guys, I can't see how it's been laddered up, but I'll open up to any questions.
No questions. I'll make a comment, though, I think it's, it's excellent. I really do. And it, it, it talks about what we're trying to do here, and it's simplified in supporting the local businesses, new communities, enhancing quality of life, and so I, I compliment you, Eric, I think it's, I think it's very, very good.
Perfect.
Any further questions or comments? Alderman Collins.
I agree. I love it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Do I have a motion? Oh.
I agree. I love it.
All right, thanks. You're done.
I was first.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Collins. Do I have a, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, bill passes. Thank you, Eric, very nice. Next, we have a motion to approve the disposal of a city surplus for multiple departments. Assistant City Administrator, April White.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a list attached there with all the surplus items for various departments and how we plan to dispose of them, and we hope to get that out in early December, so that everything is gone by year end. I recommend approval.
Alderman Collins.
So I have some questions. There's stuff that's on here that's in the budget to replace next year, like the refueller at Lacey Fine. We haven't approved that budget yet.
That's a different refueller, correct, Ty? Yeah, that's not the one for next year.
Okay, so any of the things that are on here?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, question, I'll, I'll. Just, just one comment, this goes to April. It would have been helpful if we had like an estimated value of these items. I don't know if it's possible you could even do that, based on age or wear and tear, but just curious on what we would estimate the total revenue we would see from the sale of these items would have been. Just side note.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Moros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a discussion and motion, implementation of fees in short-term rentals, VRBOs and Airbnbs. Presenter is Alderman Moros.
Thank you. Hope I don't lose my voice. I'm sure I'm not the only alderman who has received phone calls from residents complaining about one of their neighbors, whether it be disturbing the noise at late hours, along with other comments, such as overflowing trash, extreme number of persons occupying said property. The majority of these problems are from renters, who are staying over a long weekend, or perhaps longer, and have contracted with Airbnb or Verbo companies. It's been an open door for those participating, since the city has not had any substantial rulings and/or ordinances in place to penalize anyone. This situation has gone on far too long. Osage Beach has over 1,300 short-term rental units, and this number will continue to grow if we don't do something. Upon doing research in other towns, I, along with the help of our attorney and our city clerk, have found consistent rulings, such as the need for these short-term rental companies, having a city short-term rental license and a city ordinance that are safe, fair, and to both residents and visitors. In the future, possibly getting a licensing system where the city can track where rentals are located and respond more quickly to complaints or concerns. Regulation can help prevent too many homes from being turned into short-term rentals, keeping more housing available for full-time residents. This license ensures that short-term rentals follow, follow the same rules as hotels and other lodging businesses, creating a real level playing field. Licensing helps prevent overcrowding, noise, parking issues, and other disruptions that can come from poorly managed rentals. Licensing will also hold property owners accountable for problems or complaints. It would also ensure rentals to help pay for city services that they use. Therefore, I am asking the board to direct the staff to put together an ordinance for short-term rentals. This will truly help the city to keep short-term rentals safe, fair, and respectful to both residents and visitors. Also, prepare a short-term rental license for $65 per year.
Alderman Hoffman.
I'll just start off by saying I fully support Alderman Moros on this. My, my fellow Ward II aldermen, we are completely aligned in wanting to find a better way to do this and, and really start the process. You know, what was your name, sir?
Bill.
Bill. Bill brought up an issue I really didn't realize, that there was, that there was actual homeowners having problems with their neighbors. Now, I'm assuming you don't live in an HOA?
No, it got disbanded when Osage Beach got the water and the source I guess they didn't.
Okay. So I would, I would say this is kind of an HOA problem, if there is an HOA, but obviously not the entire city of Osage Beach is in an HOA, as, as Bill can attest to. So not only do I think that we should be collecting money and have a license, they're conducting business, they're not just living in the house. So I am in full support of the staff looking into this and getting an ordinance, and I, I don't know how far we can go to protect people for, for, you know, what kind of, who they can rent to and who they can't. I don't know if there's an occupancy rule on that or not, but I, but I think after hearing Bill, we should at least look into all this stuff and try to, you know, try to govern it and protect our city as best we can.
Right. Alderman Osteen.
All right, I've got a few things to discuss on this. I do support this in theory. This is an issue that has come before the board multiple times in the last several years, but it's something we've always kicked to the curb, because there are so many issues. It's kind of a Pandora's Box. One of the first things that we, as a board, we need to do is, what is the definition of a short-term rental? The standard definition is any rental or leased property for less than 30 days.
Right.
But here's where we work in a gray area. There are a lot of rental properties that run on a month-to-month basis. So if the definition is any rental or lease for less than 30 days, those month-to-month leases for the month of February means they're all on a short-term rental and then are subjected to an additional tax, correct?
No.
No?
No, I mean, it, it.
You say short-term rental for less than 30 days.
But the shorthand is less than 30 days, but when you actually look at the definitions in those ordinances, they cover that. It's, it's less than a month, you know, unless the month is less than 30 days, nobody treats February as the
True.
As the out, so I mean, it's monthly, I mean, and we could even go, you know, less than two weeks if you, if the board's really that concerned about it, but I wouldn't, I would not consider that to be a concern in drafting.
It's something we should probably verify.
But it's, it's something, if you look at, if you read the actual definitions in them, they cover that.
Yeah. My second concern is, how do we designate properties that are considered short-term rentals? There is no definitive avenue or documentation that we can pull that would define that these properties are considered rental properties.
So we've, staff has done a little digging on that one, because Alderman Moros and Alderman Hoffman discussed that with Tara, myself, and April and Devon. The first, to a certain degree, it's going to be the honor system. I mean, we're, we're not going to get every single one of them, there's no question of that. But if we were to implement a short-term rental license, for instance, we'd start with all of the ones listed on VRBO and Airbnb, and that's going to hit the vast majority of them. I mean, let's say 80%. I mean, Tara, I think, identified 1,300 on, on those two, out of all the housing units in the city, and just in city limits. The second is letting all of the property owners, or property managers know, so your Keys to the Lake, your, your PMGs, or those folks. I don't mean to pick on anyone in particular, but, but just giving some examples. And I think that's going to get you a lot of them, and frankly, for the bad ones, your neighbors are going to let you know. If you've got a renter and they say, hey, we were having a problem with this Verbo down the street, and it turns out they're not licensed, guess what? So, I live right by Quail, and I think I know which house you're talking about, just by the description.
I actually had one of the renters last year, I was home at nine, but my, my wife was out on the patio, and this knucklehead set up a sprinkler, a sparkler bomb. For those of you that don't know what a sparkler bomb is, you just take a bunch of sparklers and you take them up real good, you keep one of them out, and then you light it on fire, and it sounds like a sickening nightmare, and it can kill you. I was in Martin Arson for 15 years in St. Louis, and I know what these can do. If I had ever had that happen, I would have gotten thrown out. But the problem with it is, is there's a third party, it's not just Airbnb, it's like Showbee Rentals. You call Showbee Rentals and you say, hey, I got a problem with that. Okay, well, I'll call the guy. Well, they call the guy, and the guy says, okay, I'll quiet down. Nothing done to it.
But to answer your question, are we going to get 100%? Don't kid yourself, we won't, but I think we will get quite, quite a few, I did a vast majority through one of those routes and eventually get to everybody. And I think, again, we can discuss later what we propose, what we would suggest, what staff would recommend, but starting with something, you know, with a simple system where it's not a major burden on the, the good ones, on the good apples, I think compared to what most cities charge or impose on nightly rentals, I think most folks who are in that business would go, oh, that's nothing, so.
Well, obviously VRBO, Airbnb are the main avenues for rental properties, but there are dozens out there. Not just websites and apps, but there are management companies that basically advertise rental properties as well. So it's a huge pool that, yes, we can hit the big ones, but we'll never capture even 50% of those that are basically considered short-term rentals, whatever we define that as.
Yeah, I think we'll get a lot more than 50%. I think Airbnb and Verbo have 80, 90% market share.
All right, I'm also concerned about the implementation of how we would effectively be able to do this, or it designates that there needs to be licensees for the homeowners, et cetera. And here's kind of a gray area once again. Per federal law for Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, you can be a second homeowner, that property is considered a second home as long as you occupy it 14 days or more per year. So these homeowners, a lot of them that are renting properties, they're filing this as their second home. So for us to implement some type of rental licensing, basically, we are designated as an investment property, aren't we?
No.
It can be income-producing, but not considered an income property.
There's, those are two different definitions, and we, you know, we, if you, you can live in it for 14 days a year and qualify for Freddie Mac and rent it the other 351 days a year and clearly be a Verbo. I mean, those two things are not mutually exclusive. So no, I don't think we are hurting somebody's Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac. I mean, if they want to spend two weeks a year in it so that they can get the tax break, the mortgage tax break, or their, their terms on their loan, so be it, but if they're renting it 351 days a year, or it's available for rent 351 days a year, they're a nightly rental, full stop. That's not a gray area.
I just think there's a lot of gray areas in this, and one of the reasons we keep kicking it down the curb is the implementation designated those properties, designated those homeowners. This, it just seems like a huge task that I'm not sure if we're ready to undertake, but that's just my opinion, because this has been discussed many times.
Alderman Rucker.
I think, sorry, I'm not done yet. I think we should also defer or get information from our neighboring cities, because we know that Lake, City of Lake Ozark tried to implement this, and that basically was a huge issue.
No, Lake Ozark banned them until last year, I think it was, I think it was '24, maybe '23. Lake Ozark?
They were like four, like four or five years of being banned.
They were, Lake Ozark didn't have a regulation scheme, it was illegal to rent, to do nightly rentals in the City of Lake Ozark, and it was for, for some time. That's not anywhere close to what we're suggesting. Now, when they, and then when they took that restriction off, they just took it off. They didn't replace it with regulation, replace it with a business license, they just... Yeah, they went back to where we are now, so that's not a, that's, that's not quite apples to apples. We have done quite a bit of research and looked at what other cities do. I'll tell you that, you know, what staff would recommend is a lot looser than anything we've seen in any of the majors. I mean, you look at vacation communities that are charging licenses and the thousands of dollars a year that have moratoriums on issuing new licenses that will, you know, that, you know, you may never get another license in that town in our, in my lifetime because of how low they've set the moratoriums, the restrictions, the posting, the trash. I mean, there, you, there are some that are, they tell you how to run your business. I mean, 100%, and we're not suggesting anything of the sort, we're really, we're suggesting they basically get a business license.
Okay, well, like I said, I support this in theory, I just, I see a lot of red flags and gray area that I'm just not sure about.
I don't think that if you, if we write it well, there won't, there shouldn't be any gray area.
That's all.
Alderman Rucker.
Well, first of all, I support the way it has been presented, and Phyllis and Justin, I appreciate the work you've done. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, because obviously we're just asking the staff to go to work and present something in writing so that we can put our teeth into it, and then we can find those areas that maybe we want to change this line or that line or whatever, but, but I think it's a, it's a huge task. I think it, it does need to be done. I have advocated, I've had, I've had people come to me and want the city to ban VRBOs and short-term rentals, et cetera, et cetera, and I've totally been against that. I do not feel that government should be doing that, and I, and I'm opposed to that. But I do understand that there does need to be some, some restrictions, some guidelines some way or another to take care of those, and I do believe that a large, large percentage of the VRBOs and, well, I shouldn't say VRBO, short-term rentals, I should be using that terminology. A lot of them are rented by people and, that are good people and take care of them. Up until a year ago, I never did use them. I used them very little, but now, since I've gotten rid of my RV, I use them exclusively. And, and so I think there's a place for them, and I think we do need to just have the staff work through them. A couple of just not concerned, but questions. How will this fit in with the HMOs, homeowner associations that have chosen to ban them? We're not, we're not, we're not saying they are illegal or illegal, we're saying that if you do them, you will follow these guidelines, correct?
Yeah, and, and really, again, the guidelines, all, the only guidelines that we've discussed as staff, and we've discussed this with Alderman Moros and Alderman Hoffman, is essentially what we're going to propose, is that we require qualifying short-term rentals, which would be anybody who rents it more than a few, you know, a certain number of nights per year, which, you know, low enough that you can rent your condo out to your cousin once a year without having to get a business license, but once you're doing it repeatedly, it's, you have to, but essentially, all we're talking about right now is requiring them to get a business license. We'll call it something different, and then that'll give us a better idea of how many there are, it gives us, as Bill said, you know, the ability to revoke that license if, you know, we have repeated bad acts, we have, we now have an ordinance that allows us to revoke licenses in that situation. It gives us an after-hours contact straight to the owner. It has benefits for the city, and it, it also gives us some information to utilize as far as, you know, hey, why, you know, if we see water or sewer, sewer usage is off, we can compare short-term rentals to non and that sort of thing. But no, this would not interfere with, you know, HOAs are property right, and we're not going to interfere with the rights of the other HOA members to, you know, to restrict property. That's a contract they signed when, or that they accepted when they bought the house, and that's, we're leaving that alone.
Now, again, I support the fact of the way it was presented by Alderman Moros that we direct staff, and again, that's not saying we're going to approve it, but we've got to get off square one.
Right.
To, to put some guidelines out there, so I think it's something we should do. And my only other comment or question would be, middle of next year, six months, nine months, what kind of timeframe can we expect something back from staff so we just know it's coming? Can you give us just a...
We've been, I've been researching a lot of that, it's going to take a lot of work on my side trying to find, because VRBO and Airbnb won't give me a list, so I've got to do it manually. I'm estimating September would be our first of next year. That would be that, that's the date I wanted to have renewals, because I have business licenses in April, liquor in May, and then I can do short-term rentals in September, and then contractors in December.
So that means you need to have something back to the board by July?
Pretty much.
Preferably long before that.
I should have it done, I'm hoping.
Okay, I just want to get some kind of an ideal of when to expect something.
Writing the ordinance is not terribly difficult, I mean, there's enough others out there that we can, you know, pick and choose the parts we like and don't, and it's, given where the board's at on this, we're not looking for like a really, any really regulation, we're just, like I said, we're just requiring a license. I think the bigger lift is Tara's figuring out, she needs some kind of administrative system to keep track of all of this.
I'll come back to the board at budget time next year to ask for a, a new licensing package so it can handle, because I, I don't think our current system can handle all of the 1,300 licenses and what we want to include in on that. So I'll be back later, but I think we can get it started in September and then roll out hopefully a new system and get that going next year.
Alderman, yes, Alderman Osteen.
I think our first strategy should go back to the first point I brought out, is what is our definition of a short-term rental? Is less than 30 days, 15 days, 10 days?
Yeah, and that, and that is, I'll tell you right now, that's what it's going to say, because that's the universally accepted definition.
Wouldn't that help pinpoint and ease some of the work, is if we define now that if it's less than 15 days, then when they're doing the research with the websites, that they know they can pinpoint these type of rentals as opposed to a blanket 30 days or less, and then we decide short-term rentals are 15 days or less, well, they just double their work for no, for nothing.
The work that I'm looking on, I haven't seen any indication on VRBO or Airbnb that they list out that they're only 15 days or they're 30 days. They don't say that this is only available for this or this. I think our best thing, and we've done, I've gotten Kansas City, I've got Branson, I have Springfield, there's another one I have that lists out Columbia, all Airbnb's that, that they have listed for short-term rentals, and they all say 30 days. If you want to go 20 days, I mean, that, that's fine too, I mean, it just, I think 30 days is it.
Yeah.
Even, I just looked up for Lake Ozark, their, their, their term says 30 days for short-term rentals in their, in their code, so I think that would be our best bet.
And so all they have to pay is the $65 a year.
That's it, regardless of...
Talking about them having to pay fees weekly or monthly, or, so it's just if you're 30 days, if you're going to rent 30 days or less, which, I mean, obviously, we know that, that we have developers out, the contractors in the house were 30 days at a time, because they might be in them for 45 days or whatever, they pay 65 bucks upfront to the city and they can put whoever they want.
Okay. Well, again, this is a discussion item, and all of this is going to be mapped out as we proceed, so.
I, I just wanted to say that I was in support of it, I mean, these are businesses being, doing business. The only thing I wanted to suggest was just to make sure, I don't know where the $65 cost came, but just to make sure that that is enough, but it doesn't need to be a little bit more to cover our cost of...
We pegged that to the business license cost, but we have not set that, I mean, we haven't written it yet, so, I mean, if the board wants to raise that and discuss more...
It's a start.
We, that's the, that's the number we picked, and we picked it because it's the business license price.
Yeah, just thinking about, like, she mentioned she might need some software and stuff like that, just making sure, like, we're covered in what this is going to cost us.
You think that it would be, I mean, we can do whatever, I think, right now, because because I'm not going to include my work to get to that, shouldn't be included in on that license, it's not going to take much more to produce a license, that license versus a business license. I think it's still the same, and if, if we feel later that we want to do more regulations or anything like that, then yes, I think we up and increase the business license, that short-term rental fee, but I also think right now, we're just doing the bare minimum to get us started, it's a starting point. I believe that $65 will get it done right now.
And I'll add that when we're talking about a license, we're only allowed to charge what the cost of the service is ballpark, I mean, it doesn't need to be to the penny, but we're, we're not supposed, you know, because if you charge, if it costs us, you know, let's say $100 per nightly rental to administer the system, we're not allowed to charge $1,000 under the Hancock Amendment, that becomes a tax. But if we, at the same time, if we are charging 65 and it's costing us $100 per nightly rental, we're absolutely allowed to raise that price to cover our expenses. So when Tara comes back with her software or whatever else she needs, and she says, look, I think I need so much, and we, we think we have X number of rentals, we can take that, that number, divide it by the number of rentals, and that can, and that can educate us on what we think the fee ought to be, and if it turns out we've got way less than that or way more in a year or two, we can always go back and revisit it and calibrate it to make the cost cover the cost of the service. In fact, that's actually what we have to, to do.
And generally, discussion items are not a motion, we just give a direction, but here I see you're asking for a...
I'm asking for a motion to direct staff, so you guys can direct staff to do the work to get, to get the ordinance and get it processed, yeah?
I understand, I've just never seen that before.
Right, well, because if you didn't want to do it, because if you wanted to make a motion, you couldn't do it under, under discussions, I just added both of them together.
Do you have a motion to move forward?
Motion.
Alderman Burrell, is there a second? Second. Alderman Hoffman, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good, thank you. All right, last item of business, we have discussion, motion on the fiscal year 2026 budget. Devin Lake, please.
Good evening, mayor members of the board. So on Friday, I emailed out the final draft of the fiscal year 2026 budget. There are two things that I would like to, that have changed since that time. Number one, we had discussed the Jeffries Road million dollars. That had originally been posted to Fund 10, and it should not have been, so we have moved that to Fund 20, which is where it belongs, and then from there, it will be put into a reserve account for future construction. The second change has been due to the new K-9 handler. We had to send Freya and Officer Wright to K-9 handler school. So the PD training and conferences line item will now be over budget by $5,500 after reimbursements. So those two items have been changed from the draft that you were sent out, that was sent out on Friday. And then there's another item that I would like to get some direction from the board. On Tuesday, the Special Road District adopted their fiscal year 2026 budget, and in that, there is some additional capital improvements that have been requested, and they have requested additional funds from each city proportionally to the percent of the flows that we send to the plant. I did not allocate for those in the budget as it is presented. Staff's recommendation is that that additional funds, which comes to be about $300,000, would come from sewer plant capacity funds and not from what would ultimately need to come from CIT. And the reason we are of that opinion is because the sewer plant capacity funds can be used for capital improvements, and I feel like that's a better fund for those funds to come from instead of taking it from capital improvement tax. So I would like to know what the board's pleasure is on where the additional funding should come from for the joint sewer board, so that I can incorporate that either from CIT or from the sewer plant capacity fund, which currently is around $3 million is what's in that reserve account. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you have or incorporate any additional changes that the board would like. First reading and public hearing will be on the fourth, and the second and final adoption will be on December 18th.
Alderman Rucker, I know you're chomping at the bit over there.
Yeah, I will speak, I will speak on the one that, this is the, in reference to the sewer treatment plant, this has been discussed with the board a number of months back when it was, after a lot of work had been done, this is a project that's been going on for about a year and a half, and the, the fund that we're talking about is a fund that, that is, is supported by when people develop and develop land and, and they purchase the, or they purchase their permit, and this goes to, part of that fund goes into the treatment plant, whether it is for a new treatment plant or expansion or capital, and we've been through the definition, I will let the, our council speak to that, but we, we can use it. We've done a lot of things on the sewer board to make sure that the, the funding, or the expenditure, I should say, the expenditure of capital improvements is, is earmarked, and the projects follow the proper definition, which is the same definition that the, these funds are be, being able to be used for. So we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's with that, made some adjustments just literally Tuesday at the sewer board meeting to identify some line items within the budget for tracking purposes, which carries our, our, our treasure for that. So we've made sure it, it tracks well, and, and this fund was, was something that can be used for that, and right now, that is not being used for anything else because it was for, for those purposes. So I think that's the appropriate place to take it out of. If we find in the future that we need more than what that fund is available, we can always go into the general, or of the sewer and raise sewer rates, which, that's something I know nobody wants to hear, but we don't need to do that now. We have a fund, we have 3.1 million in there, and it's generating a little over $100,000 a year and, and, or a little bit less than, I think, or somewhere around that in, in interest, so I think that's the appropriate fund to do that and, and, and take it out of, so I fully support that.
Any other questions? All right, Devin, I think you've got your answer, don't you?
I do.
All right.
Did you, well, there's, it's, if you have a motion listed on there, do you want to...
I only put that on there in case there was a change that needed to be made in the budget. So is the board of the pleasure that I take that out of sewer plant capacity? Okay, that's all I needed.
Very good. All right, staff communications, we'll right on to keep going, Devin Lake?
Hold on a second, I can get my notes back up. Okay. Holly has graciously prepared our project update, and she handed that out before the meeting. I'm pleased to see... our project update and she handed that out before the meeting. I'm pleased to say that there are a lot of a hundred percents. So that means there's been a lot of projects done for this year. So feel free to look at that and ask any questions that you'd like. And then I'd like to give a shout out to Eric Hundel. He has been working really hard with Holly to formulate a marketing plan and direction for the city. He's also been working really hard on the sports feasibility study. And I told him the other day that he brings a really fresh perspective from the private world and that I think that we can benefit from here at the city long-term. So, thank you for everything you've done. That's all I have this evening.
All right. Assistant City Minister, yours?
Thank you, mayor. I am very excited to announce that the next time we all meet, we will be fully staffed in the HR department. So Matty comes back December first. Abby came back at the end of October, part-time. And so we started to feel some relief there, but she starts back full-time next week. A big thank you to Carrie Bell for offering her staff to fill in all those gaps while they continue to do their normal duties. Selena and Torin have been absolute troopers, taking on that extra workload. And I can't thank them enough for their willingness to help and step in. The teamwork was remarkable. So as of right now, the last HR report I hope to give in a while is, the current vacancies are, we have one police officer, four dispatchers, admin assistant for the building department, sewer crew leader and a sewer technician, and then two water technicians due to recent promotions in the water department. And then the last thing is I wanted to, after our insurance presentation from NPR at the end of October, Jason McMahon sent over that workers' comp mod rate, the experience modification rate. And it does remain under one point zero. So we're at point eight-nine as of July first, which, you know, one point zero is average. So the goal is to always be below that. The Carson claim from 2024 has not hit that yet, though. It will on, on July first of twenty-six and then will remain there for three years. But based on the amount of that claim, claim, it is likely that, that they said the risk pool will save us from a premium hike on that where otherwise it would not. So, but we'll have that update soon. Usually the, they'll have that by January. And thanks to, you know, those resources that I know Jason McMahon detailed to all of you at that meeting, along with the city's priority for safety, our mod for the last ten years has actually been below the one point zero. It's ranged from like point seven-two to point nine-six over the years. So yeah, just let me know if you have any questions about that. I just wanted to report back after Jason sent us that email. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. City Attorney, Cole Bravary.
I just have one thing, as you are aware now, but the bonds for the Oasis closed a week ago yesterday. So that project is finally off of my desk. It has been on my desk since the day I started, almost three years ago. So Mayor and I attended an event this afternoon with the contractors, kind of a kick, a re-kickoff, if you will. Everyone seems real excited to get going and there are some tight deadlines to get all of that work done with the bondholders. So they are going to get moving. So I'm really excited to see that project go. The project is one hundred percent funded and it's all up to them to build it now.
Very good. City Clerk, Tara Barret.
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of things. Election packets, for those of you that are up for renewal or need to re-up.
We call reelection.
That's what I was gonna say. Re-election, re-up, reelection, same thing. Those will be ready December ninth, the eight AM, that's a Tuesday. And then code book update, I got an email from General Code, it's all done. They're putting it all together. We should have something to you. Thank you, it just took me a couple of years. It should have something to you by mid-December. So I'm looking, I'm gonna look at it, I'll send it all out and then hopefully get it on the first meeting in January for you guys to approve and we'll get it finished and uploaded. It'll give you something fun to read over Christmas vacation. It's so exciting. And legislative conference, I've got Justin going, Kevin's out of town, Celeste, you gonna go? Nope. And Rebecca's going, Phyllis is out of town, and Bobby going?
Yes.
Okay, are we going to dinner?
We're.
No.
We're going out.
Gotcha. All right, everybody's booked. That's all I have. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
I'm going, but no hotel.
That's right, I got you.
That's a point. Chief Davis, please.
Just like to congratulate Reagan and her husband, one of our dispatchers, they had their new little baby November seventh. Everybody's home, doing fine. And I'm sure they're spoiling the little one. So congratulations to them. December ninth, we have Shop With The Cop, we're doing twenty-five kiddos at Walmart. So we're gonna, it'll be a busy night running around with them. And then Alderman Osteen asked me just to clarify something on the communications contract. Over the last three years, the average was, the ten dollars per call was fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. So the, on the new agreement, it'll bring in roughly forty-four five for dispatch fees for the year, for the first one. That's all I've got.
Very good. What'd you adjust? Building Inspector Ron Lake, please.
I have nothing to provide tonight, nothing yet.
All right, Airport, tied in still.
You're welcome.
Just a quick update, the Lee See Fine Runway Project, the runway is, the runway portion is complete. We opened it back up two weeks ago for service. There, the electrician working on the lighting project has a few things he's finishing up, should be done in the next couple of weeks. So everything's good on that end.
Very good. Carrie Bell.
Yes, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, I'll throw in another TIF, TIF update. There's several annual reportings that the city's responsible for, but there's one very important one that is due by November fifteenth that can, if not complete, stop the city from doing a future TIF, I've been told. That's never been an issue for us. So I just wanted to let the board know that the, all four, the active TIFs, those, those reports have been filed with the state on time. We have Arrowhead, Dearburgs, Obie Commons, and Lakeport Village. If it wasn't for the help of Cole and Mark Spikerman, half of the Lakeport Village would have been blank because the documents were this thick. But it is complete with their assistance and has been filed with the state. And if you would like to view those reports, they are available online, just right under the government tab, under financial, financial reports. And there, if you just follow the link, you'll find them quite easily if you would like to read any of those. And that's all I have this evening. Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Jeff Fisher, Public Works.
I'll try to keep it brief so Carrie doesn't get mad at me and keep saying nice things about me. April alluded to some of the personnel things, those updates. We have filled three of the four crew leads. And I'm real excited about those three. And also, one of the three was an external candidate. And I'm real proud of the superintendent that, that made that decision. It's a very difficult decision for him. Many would have made a different decision and, and he could have and never been faulted. So it was a business decision, he made it, and I'm proud of him. And I'm just as proud as the, of the other staff that, that were involved and have responded very well to those decisions. So, secondly, I shared a report with City Administrator and the Mayor recently about our sewer system. It seems kind of obvious, but the, you know, we're in the off-season now and we've anticipated certain things in, in the off-season that we're sort of questioning. The bugs, we were experimenting throughout the summer season and that was going very well. And then things dropped off like we expected them to, right? And we've had to make adjustments. And so we've had a few discussions over the last few weeks about being deliberate about managing the sewer system and the, and the bugs much differently in the lower-flow environment. Like, I know the mayor was getting tired of me saying high flows, high flows, high flows, and we're getting odors, right? Even though we're still using the bugs. Now we're in low-flow environment. And in some cases, in some parts of the system, it's real low-flow. And so that, that stuff's sitting in the system a long time and that creates a different problems, right? And so although we were anticipating we might dial down bugs in the off-season, we may not actually dial it down as much, we're finding out. The other thing is, like in the case of sands and even the preserve, they're at half-capacity. So, and they've smelled odors from their station. And so we've been talking recently about even managing it in a way that we're setting our floats differently in those, in those stations. And, and even trying some other, other different things to make sure the, the system's moving along every day. So it seems obvious, but in the everyday management of the system.
We're learning and we're each, we're learning. We're learning and we're making adjustments. And so I just want to point out that we're still experimenting. It is working, but we have to make several adjustments, not only in the bugs mechanically and the stations themselves. And I expect it'll take us this off-season, the next summer season, and another off-season before we sort of find a rhythm. I'm real, real excited about it. I will say, we had a tour from the Camden County Leadership Program, I think it was Tuesday, and a big group. We took them to the water tower. And as we were showing the water tower to them, Chris gets a call and says, "Hey, we got a problem with sands." Well, that was our next stop. So we took them over to sand and it worked out perfect because the guys are over there attacking whatever the problem was. Well, it turns out the, one of the pumps, there were four pumps, and one of them fell off its rack. It busted, hit the other pump next to it. And so we were down with one pump. And that was, I guess, maybe Tuesday, Tuesday. Well, then we get all the rain. So we're still working to get all these pumps back in line and we get the rain. And it makes the job really difficult. But they, they've always responded well and doing a great job. And so we were running one pump for a little while. And I hope we have two by the end of the night. But fortunately also, we talked about having backup pumps. We have new backups sitting there. So this is why it's important to have backups at these stations. So we're real proud of the crew. Thank you.
Very good. Marketing Director, Eric Hundel.
A couple of housekeeping notes. As you guys saw, the Christmas decorations that you pulled up and Holly got the information with Santa out. So you guys have all seen that on social. If you haven't, please check it out. We also got the posting for the lead pickup, Public Works team, that's all out there. So just FYI there. Update, we had a great meeting on Monday and Tuesday with the Victus team. Walter and Greg, or Gary, were in town for it. It was the kickoff meeting. Just FYI, the steering committee is Devin, April, Carrie, Eric, and myself. And we have, Alderman Hoffman is helping us with the steering committee. It went really well for the kickoff. And one of the things that they're asking for is a list of people that they can reach out to and talk to about the city of Osage Beach and this project. I'm gonna send that list out to everybody so you can see the list that we put together for, you can challenge and build it, let me know if we're missing anybody. And then the second thing is, is I sent a note to you guys asking if you guys wanted to be on the interview schedule, you know? So I'm gonna provide them all of your numbers and your names. Unless you don't want to be, then please just shoot me a note so the team will reach out for you. The plan right now is during this time, for every other board meeting we have moving forward, I'll give you guys an update on where we're at, what we're doing. And the goal is by the last of December, I'm sorry, last of January or the first part of February, that the team will be here to kind of present the standings, the findings, that we can then take away as a group, talk through, and see how we're gonna ratify things moving forward if we want to go to Phase Two. So that's kind of where we're at. And I'll continue to, guys, give you updates both verbally and written.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Carrie Patterson, City Planner.
Yeah, well, it doesn't happen often, happen often, but I agree with Devin. Eric did a great job putting all that stuff together yesterday. And I really enjoyed playing tour guide and showing them around our beautiful community. And also took them out to Ballparks National, which, you know, all of them sounded like Smurf, Smurfs at one point. Are we there yet? You know, it just, it seems like it's quite a ways out there. So it was a good time. I think these guys are going to do a very good presentation for us and a good study that we can actually use. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Alderman Collins.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Last week, I was fortunate enough to go out to Osage Hills Church as part of the Feeding America food handout. And I just want to give a, a shout-out to them. They were a well-oiled machine. They had a ton of volunteers. I think they saw over two hundred and fifty families that were coming to get food. And it was, you know, it was a, a really bittersweet afternoon for me because so many people needed it, but so many people had come out to help. So it was fantastic. The next day, we did the groundbreaking at the park for the Magic Drag, Magic Dragon Bike Trails. That was awesome. Really super excited about that project. And then, yeah, I wanted to say the Christmas lights outside look fantastic and wish everybody a happy and safe and delicious Thanksgiving. And yeah, that's all.
Very good. Alderman Rose.
Well, first of all, and once again, I want to thank Tara and Cole for the time that they've spent already. And it's gonna be a lot more time on these rentals. Veterans' Memorial, we know, is awesome. And I just wanted to remind people if they want to buy a brick with their veterans, loved ones' name on the brick, we've got forms out in our lobby and they can pick them up and submit the form with a hundred dollars. Leaf pickup date, if people would go to our website, www.oasagebeach.org, do you know where their area, where they are living, and when the city will be by to pick up leaves. And also on the website are the dates for coming to visit Santa Claus. And just as Alderman Collins mentioned, the displays and everything and the lights look very nice out here on the city hall. MODOT, for instance, the people, some people I've had ask me, "How come they stopped paving the parkway when you got to Jeffries?" Well, and I had to explain again, it's State Road from Jeffries to the bridge. And speaking of the bridge, is there any way that we, our city can do something to get in touch from our transportation department or whatever with MODOT where we could get on a regular city maintenance of cleaning up the right-ofways on the Glaze Bridge, East and West Side? I've called several times and I know other people have. And it's a matter of time with their schedule, I understand. But it, it's been like this now for several weeks and it looks horrible now with our holiday coming up. But I don't know if there's anything that we can do that, that, that MODOT would do, if they would honor some type of a maintenance schedule for us. So I thought I'd check on that.
And I'm gonna interrupt here real quick, Phyllis.
I'm sorry?
I, I did talk to Danny Reger about that very thing with MODOT a couple of months ago.
Okay.
Uh, so, because somebody called me about the same thing. And his answer to me was that they're on a regular schedule already. He would talk to his crew, but it's a, a very dangerous situation to get out there at certain times. They normally do it at night. But I'll talk to him again at the next meeting. But he did say they do it on a regular basis, but a call to let him know.
Just doesn't seem to be real regular to me, but anyway.
But I, I will mention.
Once a year.
Yeah, I agree.
It's how regular it is, once a year.
And also, I'd like to thank, once again, on behalf of all of our board members, all the city employees for their loyalty and helping to make our city a great place to live and work. In addition, want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Osteen.
I only have one thing this evening. It's a pay-it-forward story. The city for the past two years has donated to the veterans organization that has put on the Jeep Invasion held in the Strip in September. That same organization is using funds they raised during the event itself to give out turkeys and Thanksgiving dinners this Sunday to all needy veterans. They're anticipating giving away a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five meals. It starts at one o'clock. It's in front of the Reese Development Building on the Strip. But it's a good example of the domino effect, one good deed leads down the line. I know that the mayor and his wife are gonna be volunteering at the event, as am I. So anyway, just wanted to point that out, that sometimes it's just that one act that has such a domino effect on multiple people and can really change their lives. has such a domino effect on multiple people and can really change their lives. Other than that, just happy Thanksgiving, and I'm sending my deepest sympathies out to all the Chiefs fans. That's all.
Well, guess who's next, Alderman Hoffman.
I too will be down there, hopefully. The Strip, the Chiefs game is at noon, so that is a little bit of a problem, but I do plan on being down there for a little bit.
You're telling us what condition you might be in.
Yeah, well, no. So I should see down the Strip, but that is a great cause, and thanks for pointing that out. So I just want to say that I had several business owners call me up this week, and three of them called me to praise our new public information officer, Holly, and how great she was doing out there. So I just wanted to pass on that people have been talking about the amazing job you've been doing, so it's not just us noticing it, but the public is too. So great work. And I got a call from Fred Danner down at Margaritaville, and he was extremely pleased with the striping on the parkway and how quickly it got done, so well done, Jeff and your crews, because I'm amazed at how well that's turned out, so it's a great work. And lastly, Chief, is Officer Renner...
Reiner.
Reiner? Has he left, or is he leaving?
Corporal Reiner did resign, his last day was the 4th, and Officer Wright is taking over to the K-9 officer.
Okay. So, I just wanted to say thank you for everything he did here, he was a wonderful officer, he was great on camera, he was even great when he pulled me over once for having a taillight out. So I just wanted to wish him the best and a job well done here in Osage Beach. And lastly, everyone enjoy Turkey Day, gobble gobble.
Thank you. Alderman Morell.
I just wanted to comment on how well the lights and the Santa workshop and all that look out there, they look really good, so kudos to everyone that worked on that, and other than that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman Rucker.
I just wanted to kind of get the board updated, did a little bit during the budget discussion, but in reference to the sewer plant and the sewer board. The sewer board is made up of, from the city here, of the mayor, the city administrator, and Public Works, and myself, we're four of the members, there's nine altogether, there's four members from Lake Ozark of same capacity, and then there's a citizen-at-large. And then also, our role on that is to take care of all the financial responsibility, which Carrie Bell does that, and has done that for a number of years and does very well. In the last couple of months, there's been a number of projects that have culminated after a long, long time. One of those is the fact that we've been working very diligently to put a capital improvement program together, which has a five-year window with a 25-year projection, and that program is kicking off in 2026. We've just completed our budget for 2026, and we also have completed the procurement of the plant management firm alliance, which has been with us for a number of years, but we've just have a new contract. It's a three-year contract with multiple renewals, and thanks to Cole for spending a lot of time with that, helping the committee through to get that process done. So there's some things that are going on that this board isn't aware of, monthly meetings that go on to keep that plant in operation. We will be celebrating in September, the 30, gosh, I did the research, I forgot it, 35, 40?
35, I believe.
35, yeah. I just, my brain went dead, but 35 years, because 35 years ago in September next year was the first time we received treatment at the plant, and a number of things have happened since then, and the history behind it is there, and we're going to do something to celebrate that. And if you haven't been down to the plant, you're more than welcome to go, we set you up for the tour, the plant manager will be happy to take you through there. I would rather go during the spring or fall rather than in the winter, but, you know, if it's something you're interested in wanting to go down and see that portion of what the city's tax money goes to, that can be arranged as well. So, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, and to your point, too, just to give you some idea, it is a joint sewer board, and it's, the fees that we contribute are based on percentages of usage, and we're, Osage Beach is about 83%, is that correct?
86.
86%. So just to give you some idea, when every bill crosses there, 86% of that's our responsibility because of our usage, so. All right, first thing I was gonna say is thank you to Bill and the rest of the guests here tonight. They all left, but I'm sure they're watching at home. But, no, it's something that I really appreciate, because the reason I'm up here, Bill, you may or may not know, is because at one time I thought I had a problem, and so coming and talking about it the way you did is the perfect way to do it. And I know sometimes, a lot of the time dealing with government, you think, September? Before I hear anything? Between now and then, I would suggest doing the same thing. If you have a problem, certainly like any other homeowner, call the police, you know, and move forward that way, but really appreciate you coming here, and if anybody else has a problem, come see us, because the only way we can correct things is unless we hear about it, so thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. The other thing, too, the veterans parade, I want to thank Public Works Department because the veterans parade was a big deal. I've enjoyed it ever since I've been down here as a veteran, and Alderman Hoffman, all you've done to promote the city and all the things we do, but for the last several years, I had said, boy, it'd be nice to have the city of Osage Beach in the parade, and for many, many years, it just didn't happen. Well, this year, I put out the feelers, and Jeff got on, and we have five trucks, is that right? Five trucks in the parade, and a big old Osage Beach emblem there, and so I appreciate the Public Works Department getting out there and representing the city, that was excellent. Veterans Memorial, that too, was a neat thing for all those that showed up, that's gonna be here forever, get your brick, the application is still on my desk, I've had it for months. But it was nice that people showed up, I met a veteran that's 98 years old that was so proud he was out here, so it was really, really neat. Oh, and it was funny, too, the veterans parade, we had a wonderful guy that, I was looking for a car as mayor to sit in the back of, and friend of a friend, we got here, and the guy shows up, and I'd never met him before, but he had an old Ford 424, the guy was 91 years old, and just the neatest guy to talk to veterans, so it was a great day. And then, I wanted to talk a little bit, I won't talk a lot, but the ceremony that Cole and I went to today with Jeff Tagatoff, basically the restart, I want to appreciate and mention that whole group, because one thing Jeff Tagatoff said a long time ago to me was, run towards the roar. And he will be the first one to tell you that, yes, there's been a lot of hiccups, there's been some problems, the timeshare took a lot longer, would he have done things differently? Absolutely. He said today in the speech that his wife told him, never again. But the governor told him, and this is where I'm going with this, is appreciate what they're doing, this is gonna be good for the entire area, but this project, according to the governor, is the single biggest project in the history of the state of Missouri. And his first thought was, what about Busch Stadium? Well, Busch Stadium was about 360, 80 million, but not allowing for time interest and all that stuff, but as far as one single ever, 495, 96 million? 495, half a billion dollars. Biggest single thing to ever happen in the state of Missouri, so...
For tourism.
Was that?
For tourism.
For tourism, yes. But it's just absolutely amazing, I mean, right here in the little town of Osage Beach, so congratulations to everybody making that happen, and I've said for weeks, well, months, pretty soon it's gonna look like an anthill over there, and the time's coming soon. And the last thing I'm gonna say is, happy birthday to my wife. It's her birthday today, she's up in Iowa, daughter had her gallbladder removed, but she'll be home tomorrow, but happy birthday, Kim, I love you.
Happy First Day, First Lady.
All right, with that being said, we do have executive session, so notice is now given, too, the agenda includes a roll call vote to close the meeting as allowed by RSMO Section 610.021, one legal actions, causes of action, litigation involving a public governmental body, and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. So, with that, do have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, move into executive. Alderman Morell, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Yes.
Alderman Morell. Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Collins.
Yes.
Alderman Morell.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right, general meeting adjourned, we'll move into executive session.